We are now recording.
I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting for Tuesday, April 20th to order at 6:30 PM. Do we have any public comments? I have an agenda change, hearing nothing else. Jeanette was just gonna remind me. I need to add the Duncan telecommunications agreement to the new business item. So we'll talk about that probably right after the DRB. Anybody else have a public comment? Hearing done, we will move on to new business. First up will be, consider reappointments to the DRB. So Sarah, as the Chair of the DRB, has written us a letter dated April 14th. The Development Review Board asks that you reappoint the following individual to our board. Steven Palermo to the term that will expire March 31st, 2024. With the resignation of Jim Lynch, we ask that you appoint Jerry Goulet to complete his term on the board, term to expire March 31st, 2022. Please contact me if you have any other questions. Does anybody have any questions of Sarah? So, I don't see anybody's hand up. I know that this also depletes our supply of alternates.
Yeah, we lost, one of our alternates asked not to be reappointed and we moved one from alternates to regular board member. So we are now zero alternates, we normally like to have two.
So, do you think we should advertise for those open positions?
Yes.
Jeanette, do we have other open appointed positions that we should also include in that? No?
Not that I'm aware of, no. The Planning Commission is all good and Select Board's good, so.
So, does the board think we should advertise for alternates to the DRB so then people can get up to speed?
That would be my preference.
Okay, so let's have a motion to appoint Steven Palermo to the term ending March 31st, 2024, and to appoint Jerry Goulet, who is an alternate now, to replace Jim Lynch's term that ends March 31st, 2022.
You need to make the motion.
Yes. So I'd like to move that the board will put Steven Palermo and Jerry Goulet onto the board for the respective terms.
Second.
Joe has seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, all five.
Yeah, Dan raised his hand.
Yeah, I saw that.
Thank you, everyone.
The next is the agenda item I added, which is the Duncan telecommunications agreement to service the town hall so that we have fiber at the town hall and it will be a larger space that we can hold our meetings. This is a one-year contract at $59.95 per month for the platinum for fiber.
So they can get fiber at town hall?
So that would be, and Tabby has contacted Duncan and they're assuring us that that can be done before pre-town meeting.
But I can't get it at my house at the end of the day. Just an aside.
So, so the goal is to have the fiber in place before, by pre-town meeting?
And how much does that end?
$59.95 a month. It's a one-year contract and it needs a signature, so if somebody wants to make a motion, I will sign this and we will get the fiber moving from Duncan.
I make a, I make a motion that we authorize Vicky Capitani to sign the fiber tele, the fiber agreement with Duncan Cable for $59.95 per month for a one-year contract.
Second.
And Dan jumped in on that first. Any discussion on the fiber to the town hall? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, any, and I have no other new business, we have unfinished business, we have to consider the KAS.
Police Department?
Oh, police, sorry, sorry Randy. FYI, building maintenance issues.
Where would you like me to begin? A new building?
Oh my. Oh my!
So, the sewer's all good, however, the other day, we ended up with a water leak. So, after looking into it and stuff, it's some piping that was done, that was put in when got converted over to the police station and ended up taking part of a small little addition where the pipes went apart, because that's where Richard said to look, because he was there, because it was like right in the middle of the, between the garage and the holding cell, so it wasn't coming from either end of the building, it was like literally right in the middle. And so we did that, shut some water off, then turned it back on, found some pipes that are leaking. So Dave Smith came over and he also took a look at it as well, and then we've called a plumber. And so they believe that they can get in there without doing too much work, without knocking maybe any of the wall where the pipes come through bigger to get there and they'll be able, just to get in there somehow, cut the pipes, pull them out and put in some new ones. So, I have no idea how much that's gonna run. Reason why I'm letting you guys know this note advances, because obviously with the sewer thing, I'm already over my maintenance budget by, right now, $220. So with this, there's gonna be, you know, an added cost, hopefully there, it's gonna be very minimal. That's number one. The other thing that I wanted to know what you guys want to do on this part was before we end up finding the sewer problem, the garage part, the vinyl siding is coming off, the wind's done some damage to it, there's broken pieces, it's all ripped and stuff like that. Back in October, I had Dave come in and take a look at it. I cannot remember, it's not here on the estimate, we got an estimate of whatever this stuff is called from WW, just to redo the garage portion back in October, but it's the stuff that they put on the brick building and stuff, it's some kind of a wood grain kind of a siding, something, it's the stuff that they said that they've had at the brick building and some also on the highway garage. So back in October, we were looking at it, because we were gonna probably do it in early spring, but that estimate back then was about $660, so that should be something that we should also get repaired. So, I'm just filling you in on the maintenance, maintenance building issues. If you wanted to, so not to go too over budget this year with the maintenance, I can probably, not probably, we can hold off and do the siding until after the first of the year, or do we just wanna try to get it all done in this budget year?
Sarah.
Randy, how old is that vinyl siding estimate? You said October?
The vinyl, what, that we got from WW?
Yeah.
I got this back in Oc, in October.
Okay, you need to get it checked, building, construction materials are going through the roof. It could easily be double that now.
Yeah, and I don't know, again, in, I don't know if you guys know what it was, Travis wasn't here, he told me today when I saw him earlier, what this stuff is called, and I can't remember what it is, but it's, it's something that's better than the vinyl and stuff, so.
But.
But yeah, so I don't, I mean, let's just say, argument sake, I mean, I don't know, we can get, I can get another estimate, or you guys wanna just put this off until after July, or do you want me to just, since I'm already over, like I said, 200, now I've got the water issue leak that we've got going on.
Is this a follow-up on that?
Yeah, I just basically wanna say, if you're, I would try to reach out and get an estimate on that material, and if it is going up, I would say do it sooner than later, because prices are going up like every other week. It's not like every three months the prices are going up.
Okay.
Now, this material may be an exception and somebody at WW would be able to tell you that, but if it's, if it's in that same cycle as this other material, you might wanna just get, get it over and done with, even if it is out of the budget.
Okay. Yeah, I forget. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask, is there any other board comments on this? Joe, Dan?
According to the contractors coming my place, WW is only guaranteeing a 24-hour, which will guarantee on what they give you a price on anything.
Yep, okay.
So you're correct in having him get a recent estimate. I don't know how you can get them to hold on it unless you buy the material and hold it aside.
Anybody else? Joe, do you have a comment?
I do not have a comment, but if we can wait, maybe the prices will go down.
So, what I'll, what I'll do is, because I'm leaving tomorrow for vacation, Jeanette's laughing, and I will not be back until the 5th, which I will not be at the next Select Board meeting. What I will do is I will reach out to Dave or Travis by text tomorrow before I head out and, or I'll call him and just see if they can't get another estimate on that and see what WW can do and have him give it to Jeanette. And then you guys can discuss it at the next board meeting while I'm gone. And if I happen to be bored and just sitting in the condo, maybe I'll zoom in real quick, but don't hold my breath.
Sarah.
Will Mike come when you're not here? Will you have Mike Gardegas come?
Ah, yes, I can, I will, that's, that's good, yeah, I usually do have him join in, so yeah, I'll make sure that he's there and I'll try to update him as much as I can.
So. I have a question, Randy, so you're saying that Dave Smith can do the work, so we don't have to worry about getting a contractor lined up to do that? Because that's also problematic this year.
Yeah, no, Dave, Dave can do it, and even talking with Travis, he said, today, he says, yeah, just let me know and we can, we can get him there. Dave's done it, and he knows what he's doing.
That's outstanding, so I think we're gonna have to move on whatever estimate we get very quickly. And also, how long it will take for it to get here, because delivery times are increasing too.
Okay, I'll get ahold of Dave and Travis tomorrow morning before I head out and let them know what your thoughts are and have them get going, and I'll fill Mike in and then they can reach out to Mike and Jeanette and stuff and get ready for your next board meeting.
Perfect, have a good vacation.
Thanks, well, I'll see you in a couple more, in another hour.
I know, I know.
Okay.
All right. Now, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. We're gonna consider the KAS supplemental site investigation at the brick building town hall, $21,190, and is Kimberly here?
I saw her.
Yes, I am here.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, thanks for having me.
So, first off, can you just give us, in a nutshell, why, because there's gonna be questions why now we're paying, we just signed a contract last meeting and now we're gonna sign another contract, because can you just give us the, the short version of why, why, why we're doing this?
Sure, so the work that is up for consideration tonight is for looking at the sources of PFAS contamination on the property, so figuring out what the source of that is, if it's indeed from the septic system or other areas on the property, resampling some surrounding private wells that had low detections of these contaminants and collecting some more data to define the extent of that contamination on the property. The, I believe what you considered at your last meeting was related to evaluating the best option for the water system, whether that be a replacement well or some other option to address the contaminated water source on the property. And that work, there is funding available specifically because it's related to what's being required by the drinking water program. But the work tonight to investigate the sources is required by my division at DEC, the Sites Management Section. And unfortunately, there's not funding allocated to properties that have these contaminants.
Okay, so do you just wanna also now briefly give us a summary of the, I read this, the work that, the, to figure out what the source is and just what the plan is? Can you do that? I know that's a lot to say, and a little bit is, so, but just, just a overview.
Yeah, so there was some work done last, late summer, fall, but it didn't completely give us a, an understanding of if indeed the PFAS contamination that's been found in the groundwater, if, where it's coming from, if it's confined to the town's property, and if there's a potential for surrounding properties to have contamination above our standards. So this additional work is to help answer those questions, to see if there's any fluctuation in the levels that are, have been found at the neighboring wells and confirm that the contamination is limited in shallow groundwater to the town's property to see if any other, any other work would need to happen as far as monitoring or addressing impacts to other properties.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion from the board? Scott?
The, that funding, what, I know you said it could like dry up soon, is that, do you have any, oh, sorry.
That was for the last, there's no funding for this.
Okay, that one's, uh.
Currently.
Yeah, I know it's a little, it's a little confusing, because there's, there's two programs within DEC that are working together for these sites that have PFAS contamination and both the site investigation side and the drinking water side. And fortunately, drinking water is able to provide funding for some of the work that they're asking for.
Joe, you must have a question.
I don't have a question, I read through the information. I, so is this, I guess, asking, is this stuff that we have to do, we have to monitor, or can't we just come up with a solution for the water, do we have to also try to figure out why it's there?
So both things need to happen, so once there's a, an exceedance to the PFAS standard found on a property, the property owner or responsible party is required to investigate the source and completely delineate that contamination. And then part of that, you know, typically you would go through that entire investigation process before you determine, you know, what needs to happen as far as cleanup or something else, but in this case, kind of, both things are happening in parallel as far as planning what to do with the contaminated water source, whether that be a replacement well, making improvements to the existing well, or determining that long-term treatment is the best option at the property. So those are the things that other, other sites have typically been looking at to decide. And I know that the town was already considering a replacement well a while back, and then things kind of got put on pause for a while.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you. So it's something we have to do, so there's not really a lot of discussion, but just to do it. Yes.
Anybody else? Hold on a second, I just wanna make sure if there's anybody in the public who has a question, who doesn't understand what this is all about. The board's all set? Okay, Joe, you wanna make a motion?
Well, I make, yeah, I'll make a motion, I don't have it in front of me, but I make a motion that we sign an agreement with the KS, KS group to do the water sampling of the groundwater and different things they're gonna do. I don't have it in front of me.
Land investigation.
The investigation, thank you.
With an estimate of $21,190.
Ouch, yes.
Second. Joe, and Dan has seconded. Any other discussion? Jeanette, do you have your hand up? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my laptop like just quit on me, so now I'm doing both on the other computer. But Rebecca Treat was gonna be with us as well from K, from CAS, but I don't see her on here yet, so I don't know if she had anything else to add, but you know, that's basically her proposal that you have. And I thank you, Kim, for coming on to explain it well.
I, I think we understand that this is something we have to do. And it also is potentially implicating some other wells in the area, so we need to find out what's going on. All right, so we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. She's still there? No. Okay, moving on. We're gonna affirm the deputy fire warden appointment that we made at the last meeting and add our signatures to the Vermont Deputy Town Fire Warden Appointment Form. We already appointed.
Oh, right.
So now we're gonna affirm that by, by asking everybody to sign, so. I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion that the board sign the Vermont Deputy Fire Town Forest Fire Warden Appointment, and we're, we're appointing David Shelton, Sheldon of Eastover, and.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So.
Aye.
Joe and Dan, are you gonna come by and sign this stuff, or do you want Jeanette to add signatures to everything that we're doing tonight for you two?
I could be there Friday.
Yeah, I can do it on Thursday.
All right, so they will come in and sign.
The office is closed on Friday.
Yeah, you can't do it on Friday. It's, the office is closed on Friday. So, Jeanette?
Andy's usually there at some point, so if we knew what time you were coming, Joe, we could arrange for that.
I'll just plan on doing it Monday. Then as long as I'm ready, you're gonna have no signature on it, but I'll come in and sign.
This is something we have to send to the Agency of Natural Resources. Is there an urgency to do that?
The, the fire warden?
Yeah. Mail to Agency of Natural Resources.
Yeah, Dave Sheldon was going to mail it once it was signed, he was gonna take it from there.
Okay. All right, I'm just gonna leave it here in the stack then.
Okay.
Okay, now we're moving on to Economic Development and the third quarter update.
Hello, so this is from January to March. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at the R versus the budget so far, and then just a few highlights. So our February payments in 1%, which was from October to December, came in at $116,142.23. So last year, that payment was $172,000 and change. So we saw about a 30% decrease, which we were expecting a decrease. I don't think it was as much as Eric and I thought it might be, so we felt pretty good about that. Not reflected in the expense updates are the Restart Vermont Marketing Grants and the Elder Grant Rebates. So those were about $220,000, which isn't included there. For beautification, we just started our last year of a three-year contract, those payments went out, and we advertised for proposals for a new three-year contract, and that closes April 30th. For DASP program, we're at 55% of our budgeted allotment. Do-It, we have four outstanding projects left, there were two completed this quarter. Bytown Marketing Subcommittee, you did approve that funding, so we are moving forward on those programs with the new chamber website. Eric's working with Munacoat on the new town website, and they just sent new inner mockups today. And Village Center, Eric's gonna talk about that shortly. And for Trails, we did form that committee and they started meeting monthly in February. And A-minus is once again a project in motion. So that's a quick date from our department for the fifth quarter.
Thank you, Shannon. Are there any questions of Shannon concerning the quarterly update for the third quarter, which was October 1st through December 31st?
No.
January to March.
The first quarter, sorry.
Third quarter fiscal.
Right. January to March. Yes.
Out of curiosity, you said like 30% was better than expected, what? Do you think it was going to be like, I don't know, drastically different, was that?
It could have been, yes.
That money that we received in February would have been from the, the second quarter, correct?
Right, so the, the payment we received in February was for October to December. So we get paid a quarter after the fact. So October to December versus last year's 1% was down 32%.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public have any questions? Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Now, now Eric's gonna talk to us about the Village Center application.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Are you in your car?
Okay, sorry, GMP decided to shut off the power from New Faint to Dummerston tonight without telling anyone, so I'm in my truck. So I sent.
Devotion.
I sent to you guys the completed application for the Village Center designations for both West and East Dover. What needs to happen tonight is I need any questions that you guys have presented to me so that I can answer them, and then I need you guys to vote to, as long as everything is okay, to vote to approve said application for submission. Once the application is approved, I will submit on the first Monday of the month. Unfortunately, about 10 minutes after I sent you this completed application that I was very excited was done, I was contacted by Richard Amore, who is the program head, who said that their board has decided not to meet in May. So while I can submit our application on the first Monday of May, it will not be reviewed, reviewed until June. Richard has assured me that, you know, as long as, he's, he's basically seen all this stuff already, but as long as everything's good, it'll go in front of their board in June, will get approved, and then all of the included properties within those Village Center designations will still be eligible for the funding that becomes available in July. So, does anyone have any questions for me about our application? There is a, a pretty extensive checklist of things that need to be completed and included, and all of those things are in here. The last thing that will be included in this application is a copy of our Select Board agenda from tonight, mentioning that we are in fact reviewing the Village Center application and that we will be adding, and then I'll be adding the minutes to the meeting to show if and when you guys approve the application.
Any questions of Eric concerning the application? No. I really wanna thank you, this has been a big project and I, I think it's, we don't all understand just how much work this was, and it was a big, big project, so thank you, Economic Development Department.
Thank you.
And I will entertain a motion to approve the Village Center application.
Second.
No, I need to.
Some moved.
Some moved, you, you get to make the. Some moved, you, you get to make the. Sarah moved it, Scott seconded it. Any other question, any other comments from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Dan, are you still with us? I don't, I don't see Dan on.
He's there.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, he's next to, he's in bottom row, right.
Did he say yes?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan, sorry. It's hard, I have to look all the way across the room, as you know, to see the monitor.
Old eyes.
Thank you. Next, we're going to need to go into the Board of Liquor Control.
And we can we enter the Board of Liquor Control?
Scott is seconding. We have the first and third class licenses for TTR LLC DBA to Tannery Road, and an outside conduct, outside consumption permit for TTR LLC DBA to Tannery Road.
I make a motion.
Randy?
All set.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the first and third class licenses and the outside consumption permit for TTR LLC DBA to Tannery Road.
Second.
Second by Scott? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now we have a second-class liquor license for APT Inc., DBA Tony's Pizza.
I make a motion that we approve the second-class license for APT Inc., DBA Tony's Pizza.
Second.
All set.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, okay. Well, let's just get this, let me get my name on these, and then we can move on.
I make a motion to come out of Board of Liquor Control?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded Sarah's motion?
Scott did.
Scott seconded it?
Second. Aye, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, now we are into the consent agenda. We need to approve the minutes of April 6, 2021.
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I seconded.
Scott seconded, any discussions or corrections? A hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we're going to do the warrants of April 17 in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars seventy-five cents.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. So are you guys going to come in and sign this board, these liquor control ones too at the same time? Or do we, want to just have Jeanette sign?
Fine, Jeanette can sign it, or I can come in, like I said, Monday.
Yes, Jeanette?
I usually try to send those out right away to Liquor Control because they, they tend to be taking a lot longer than normal. So if I could sign for Dan and Joe, that would be helpful.
That's fine, you can sign for me. That's fine.
Dan? Good, we got that. Dan? Okay, you can sign for Dan as well.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you. They'll all be here on the table. Okay, now we have an FYI. We have pre-town meeting Tuesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM. I'm hoping with the fiber to the, that we can have an in-person and a Zoom meeting at the Dover Town Hall. Obviously, we have to, that's what, I'd like to plan that if everybody's in favor of that. And if something goes south, we can always just backpedal and do a Zoom meeting. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Any other discussion about that? Okay, we have the Southern Vermont Economy Summit Online Event, May 12 through 14. Tickets are available at Silver, Silvermontzone.com. Who's going? I see Jeanette and Eric.
Not me, Shannon.
None.
Shannon and Eric.
I mean, yes, sorry, Shannon and Eric and anybody else? Is anybody on the board going to this?
I need to all look at.
How much are the tickets?
Seventy-five?
Yeah, eighty-five, twenty, including tax.
There you go. If you're unable to attend, we'd be happy to fill you in afterwards.
I'm sure you will do a good job doing that, thank you very much. There are some good speakers, I noticed that.
There really are.
Okay. Town Meeting Day will be Tuesday, May 18th at 10 o'clock at the Corinthia Base Lodge. Hopefully, everything's going to go great with that. Select Board Reorganizational Meeting will be Wednesday, May 19th at 6:30. So we have multiple meetings that week, yes, Jeanette?
Yeah, I, I just presumed that that was going to work for everybody. That we normally do, okay.
Where?
Here.
Here.
Or maybe at the Town Hall, we'll see, we'll see how it operates. Well, sometimes it is.
It is?
Yes, because we have a full agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we're missing our meeting because of town meeting.
Gotcha.
Because we'll be needing boat counters on town meeting night, yes. Okay, and then we also have the River Valleys meeting at Wordsboro in a tent on the 22nd at 10:00 AM. So that, that's a lot of meetings in a, in a short time period. Yeah, so that's all that. And also, we need to also start putting on our, since May is very busy with meetings, June is going to be employee reviews. So we need to start thinking about times that that's going to work, the board meets. We have to tell department heads to, to get us their self-evaluation. We meet to do evaluations, and then we meet with each town department head. So there's a lot to it, and it takes multiple meetings, and it takes a lot of time. So everybody should just keep that out. I'm going to tell you right now, I will not be attending the June 15th meeting. I cert, I might be able to attend by phone, but I cannot run the meeting. So I just want to put that out there already. Okay, so with that, do we have?
Set a deadline now for when the department head reports come in?
Um, I. I think I'd like to just get it on the next agenda. There's time, because it's just, that's the first meeting of May, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have it by blah blah.
So, and by then, and Randy, Randy will be gone, so we can decide, we can make those decisions without, without him.
Just so you guys know, giving you way in advance, that also in June, I may be gone the last two weeks in June. So if, I'll throw that out there now, in case you guys are deciding at the next board meeting about evaluations, that there's a good chance I'm not around the last two weeks in June.
We can always do yours individually if we have to. Yes, Jeanette?
I was going to say, could you, could you Zoom somebody with their, with their, you know, evaluation? If they can't be there in person?
Okay, we'll, we'll tackle that in May, but it should be on our radar. The liaison reports, is there anybody who has a liaison report? Joe, Dan? No. Okay, fine. Well, we're going to go into executive session. Joe, did you say something? Hold on a second, Joe?
No.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Vicky, real, real quick before you go into executive session, because I just need a clarification, because when we were off the phone, I called Dave Smith real quick. So he's going to go down tomorrow and get that estimate and, and drop it off at the office and, and stuff. So did you guys want to wait until the next board meeting to make a decision to buy that and go forward, or just buy it now and be done with it, with whatever price it is instead of waiting?
Yes, Sarah.
My first suggestion would be with the estimate, find out if that is one of the materials where the price is, where they're seeing rapid increases in the price. I think it's, it's on a lot of construction material, but not necessarily everything. So it's possible that that's been a fairly static price. But I would say if they're not guaranteeing the price, we might want to authorize them to go ahead and make the purchase, because in two weeks' time, it could go up again.
All right, so maybe I'll ask Dave then to see that whatever price he gets, if they'll lock that in until at least your next board meeting to make a decision?
WW may not allow you to.
And if they don't, then just go ahead and purchase it.
Hold on, hold on.
Can I make a suggestion?
Joe, you can speak.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If you buy something from W&amp;W, I'm pretty sure you can return it. So if it's higher than what it is, we could always return it. So if you can get it and get what you need, Randy, just buy it. And if it's overpriced and we say something different or whatever, you just call your lazeon, see if that's all right, and they can just call us. So do what you need to do, but obviously, we don't want to pay four times as much for whatever you have to do.
I think that makes sense.
And then we also don't know if they have it in stock or if it's something you have to order.
Correct.
So I think that, I think that we can trust the judgment on, on this and.
Correct.
And do what we need to do to try to save as much money as we can.
Right.
Okay, so what I'll do then is tomorrow morning, I'll reach out to Dave, tell him to go ahead and get a price. And if it seems like if it's, you know, starting to get substantial, Sarah, do you have a problem if I just have him maybe reach out to you directly and you guys deal with it on my behalf and make that recommendation on what to do?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else from anybody before we go into executive session? Okay, so we have two executive sessions, one is with Randy concerning personnel, and then Eric on legal matters. So I'm thinking we should probably do Randy's first, is that okay with you, Eric?
Eric, I can text you whenever I'm ready for you.
Okay, and then, yeah, somebody's there to let me back in, right?
It should be rel, it should be relatively quick.
So, yes. So Eric, I, yeah, Tabby's here.
Oh, yeah. So just have shit, if Sarah messages me. If Sarah messages me, I'll just get, I'll hop back on as long as somebody can let me in.
Yeah, so just tell me I'm happy to. Do you need to, do you, do you need to be a gatekeeper on this, or can you turn that off? Well, I can. Well, I'll turn off the recording, right.
Well, we're, wait, wait, we haven't done that, don't do that yet. Okay, all right. Yes?
So it, it, what it is, it's about my new hirere. So if somebody's, I have no problem if people want to stay, you know, like Eric and Tabby or whatever. That's what it's about, it's about a recommendation on my new hirere.
Okay, so it's in, okay.
I have no problem, I'll leave that up to your discretion.
So can you tell us, are you, we just advertised for a new police officer, is that what this is about? The person you want to?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I think that it's better at this point that. Eric, I think you should go.
And I will message you.
Okay, and I think it's okay if Tabby is here at this point. So with, and then we'll let you know, and we'll let you back in, okay? All right, so we're going to stop, so we're going to go into, and make a motion to go into executive session?
Some moved.
At seven fourteen. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay.